I'd like to call to order my Missburg City School Board meeting for Thursday, July 15, 2021. Let's stand for the pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mrs. Angel?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
I'm present. Mr. Homan?
Here.
Okay. Next, we have the adoption of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move we adopt the agenda for July 15, 2021.
Second.
Okay, first by Amsler and a second by Toadvine. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, next, we have D, the approval of minutes. The recommended action is the approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on June 24, 2021, and the special board meeting held on July 1, 2021, and July 15, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of both of those meetings.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so first by Angel and a second by Lewis. Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, next, we move on to E, the approval of the financial report dated June 30, 2021. The recommended action is the approval of that financial report dated June 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the financial report, June 30, 2021.
Second.
Okay, so first by Lewis and a second by Angel. And Mrs. Heckman?
June board reports were reviewed and approved at the June 24 board meeting, but because we can't do our cash reconciliation until we get our bank statements, this is any updates and we continue to take receipts and make deposits per revised code. So there's no changes to your PI, but there were some changes and you've got the cash reconciliation for the month of June and the investment report.
And so we're still okay?
We're doing good.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have F, recognition of the citizens, staff, and students. Okay, and we have two green sheets today that they've been asked to be placed on the agenda, and they can bring their questions or concerns to the Board of Education at this point of the meeting. You need to state your name, address, and what organization you represent. And each person is allotted three minutes. So do you want to start out first, Megan Wolf? Do you want to start out first with your concerns or questions? You can come up to the podium.
I just kind of wanted to see where Miami'sburg stood regarding the mask for the upcoming school year, the vaccines, and also critical race theory, and see where Miami'sburg is with that for the upcoming year.
Megan, would you please straighten, give us your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 20 South Street, Miami'sburg.
Well, I think you were at the retreat part of the time today, and basically, you know, we are not going to require masks unless we have a mandate from either Montgomery County Health Department or the Ohio Health Department. So we're hoping not to have masks.
Okay, if by some chance during a point of the school year it is mandated, will you guys be offering to do the online schooling again as you did last year?
That's a good question. I think that's something we need, still need to work through.
I can address that.
But we had that question today and...
Yeah. On the agenda later is a contract with Montgomery County ESC. They are providing a remote learning option this year through them, so we have a contract with them if we have some students that would want to go online. They would still remain Miami'sburg students, but attend through the Montgomery County ESC remote learning option.
Okay.
It is on there if we need it.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. And then as far as the vaccines go, you know, they're emergency vaccines, and there's just no way we can require an emergency vaccine. We can't mandate that.
Good.
So as far as critical race theory goes, we don't promote or teach the doctrine of critical race theory. We teach the Ohio learning standards, and if you want to look at those, they're at the Ohio Department of Education website, and you can see those by grade level and by content.
Okay.
So, and you know, I've talked to our teacher union leader, and he's assured me that that is not going on in our district.
Good.
So.
Okay, well, those were the only questions they had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then next, we have, is it, oh, Christine War- is it Warner?
Yes.
Okay.
She did all the money.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate your interest in our schools and the questions that you do have. And thank you, Mrs. Moore. I wasn't sure about that. I knew we had it for some student, you know, for students that couldn't come back, but... Okay, great.
...all emergencies needed.
Awesome.
And actually, it was just added today. We got a contract last week. We have to have it today.
Okay, great. Right, next, we'll move on to our resolution for our business honor roll awards through Ohio School Board Association. And this is how the resolution reads. Whereas public schools and local business are an integral part of the community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Therefore, be it resolved that the Miami'sburg City School District Board of Education names the following businesses to the 2021 Ohio School Board Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And yeah, you know, we have our local and state and federal monies that come in, but it's still not enough to provide the items that you help provide, and we truly appreciate, you know, that icing on the cake. And Dr. Blessing's going to present those, and we'll start out first. I don't believe Bennett's Publics here, but they donated $3,000 to, towards our new softball scoreboard, so we appreciate that. And then Maury Construction, I think he said his mom was going to have surgery today. They donated $7,000 toward the new softball scoreboard. And then I don't know, I don't think anyone's here from the Premier Group, right? Okay. They donated $10,000 to the new baseball scoreboard. But let me just go back. Bennett's, it's Ben and Jane Dodson, and with Maury Construction, it's Jason Maury, and with Premier Group, it's Brad and Jeannie Sizemore, and Bobby and Michelle Boyer. Then Viking Heating and Air, they donated $25,000 for scoreboard advertisement at Holland Field, $10,000 for heating and air in our press boxes at Holland Field, $2,000 to Campus Quest, and $2,000 to the wrestling program, and that's Jack Smith, the owner. Those were all the four businesses. And then we had two special projects, and they are here. Miami'sburg Moose, and if John McCord and William Dean want to come up. They gave us $3,000 when our after-school programs at Bear and Kinder Elementary were closed due to the funding needed elsewhere. Children got to stay after school two nights a week. They received help with their homework, and they did physical activities such as kickball and craft projects. And so the $3,000 paid for the transportation to get the kids home, so this project could continue for many at-risk kids. And then also, we had O'Neill and Associates, if you want to come up, because you were involved in the same project, the after-school project. And is Hernan, and your name is Hernan Livas? Am I pronouncing that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they donated $1,000 for the after-school program, and that provided the transportation as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'll make sure I get the certificates to those four businesses. Next, we have State Representative Tom Young with an awards presentation. Kinder and Mound Elementary Schools earned a gold level and $2,000 for their schools through the Montgomery County Educational Service Center and Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services, the Adams School of Excellence and Prevention Programs. This means that throughout the school year, these schools have made significant efforts to plan for and implement prevention programs and strategies to support student mental wellness. Bauer, Jane Chance, and Mark Twain Schools earned silver level and $1,500 for their buildings. Bear, Medlar View, and Miami'sburg Middle School achieved bronze level and earned $1,000. So that's pretty exciting, and Mr. Young's going to present those to Dr. Blessing.
It's, this is, I was telling school board member Lewis on the way in, these are the things that I really look forward to doing. When you see the utilization rates starting to increase in regards to drugs, alcohol, and especially mental health with our young people and the phone calls and families that I sit with, this is significant, and I really appreciate the efforts of these schools doing this. So, pretty exciting. This is, this is awesome. So I'll read the commendation, and I'll leave the name of the school out, and then you've already mentioned it, although I'll mention it again, the schools involved. On behalf of the members of the House of Representatives of the 134th General Assembly of Ohio, we're pleased to commend the schools of Miami'sburg, elementary schools on receiving the 2021 School of Excellence in Prevention Award from the Montgomery County Educational Service Center and Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services. These schools are deserving of recognition for making significant efforts to plan for and implement prevention programs and strategies to support students' mental health, wellness, and encourage their growth, and its exemplary efforts have created a positive environment for its students. We are certain that this fine institution, these fine institutions will continue to display the same unwavering dedication to excellence for which it has become known. Education is vital to our nation's continued economic and social well-being, and as the need for global learning and understanding increases, so do the demands based upon our system of education. Clearly, the administration, the faculty and staff, and the students of these elementary schools can feel privileged to be associated with such a proud heritage, and we are certain that this, these institutions will continue to serve as a model for schools across our state. Thus, it is with great applause that we congratulate these elementary schools on its accolade and extend best wishes to years to come. Signed, Robert Cupp, Speaker of the House, and Tom Young, 42nd House District. This, this is so important to recognize these, these schools and these young people, as I said before, and I thank you all for supporting this as well. You had talked about this. Bear School received a bronze award. Jane Chance Elementary received a silver award. Mark Twain Elementary received a silver award. Bauer Elementary received a, let's see where we're at. Was that a, is that a silver award for them? Yeah, silver award. And I talked about Medlar View. And Mound Elementary received a gold, and Kinder received a gold. It's awesome. So thank you for allowing me to come to present these. Please present them to the principals of those schools. I would like to say, there was, on another subject, there was a tremendous amount of work that was done this year in the legislature, and there are many, many subjects and topics that took place, some still pending, more monies to distribute, and at some point in time, I'd like to be able to come back, perhaps in September or later on in August, and answer any questions you might have. If you would forward some of those to me, I would appreciate that, Madam Superintendent. And, but there are many, many exciting things happening. We feel that we fought hard in the legislature to get things done for primary through secondary education in Ohio, and I think it was a big step forward, both from the funding level and policy. So, thank you for having me this weekend, or today, I'm sorry.
And Tom, you may come do my legislative report anytime you want to.
What's that?
You may come do my legislative report anytime you want to.
Well, you know, any questions you guys, you always have, you know, just let me know. We communicate readily. But I will have to say that of the school districts that I've been to in my district, I really look forward to coming here. You all, you listen to your citizens, and you take it on and communicate very, very well. I don't get many questions from the school district, from the citizens at all. You handle it, handle it very, very well, so I don't get the emails and the calls and things like that, so I commend you for that.
Tom, I know you're probably aware of this, but being a realtor, and I do sell commercial real estate to any area, the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Service did purchase a building in Miami'sburg. We just closed on it last week, and it'll be probably a year by the time they do everything that they need to do to have the services right here coming through Miami'sburg, but I think that's kind of a privileged way I look at it.
Yeah, that's, that's good to know. If you could send me more information about that, I'd really appreciate it, because we were able to, in the budget, secure 25 million for Children's Medical Center, which was a huge lift of the 80 million that statewide of children's hospitals, we were able to get 25 million, and that was thanks, thanks to the legislators that we worked together in our region, which hasn't been done for a long, long time, and the Lieutenant Governor and the group of lobbyists that really, really pushed hard. The need for these types of facilities are extremely important, especially now. We don't really know what the numbers are going to look like and what the utilization rates are going to be, because they're sort, they've been muted because of, because of COVID. But we're prepared, we're prepared in the budget to take on some of those things that we put money back for. So please let me know about this program if you would.
I got a report yesterday, and the, the deaths from opioids was the highest it's ever been so far this year for this, for being at this point in the year.
The impact, we, they've, we've taken such a drastic step back. We were on a very positive, positive keel, I would say. And so I think we've taken a step back probably six, seven, eight years, unfortunately. And as far as the effects of, in the United States, I don't know the data in Ohio at the moment, but 60% of the population is affected at this particular time with, with anxiety and depression. And our goal is to keep that awareness and to bring, bring these, to bring people who suffer and young people who suffer out of the dark, and bring them out and open. Their names are Tom and Bill and Susan, and the struggles with medications, and, and someone to talk to and counselors. I mean, we are, we are hard-pressed at the moment because of the opioid crisis to take on the mental health issues, and, but we're poised to do it, and we fought in this budget to be able to do that, and it's important. And we need to, as a community and as a state, we need to welcome the fact that it's real, and it's okay, and we're going to work on it. And if we keep that attitude and open our arms like people do in Miami'sburg, that helps the process. And it's just not about money. It's about welcoming and bringing people out of the dark who never talked about it before, and it's okay. You know, we welcome your participation and your abilities, and I really want to hear about that program, but that's, that's what we need to do. That's what we need to do, and that's what we're working for in Columbus financially. But in the spirit of the, of the, the issue and awareness, a more positive approach to the individuals that suffer are the most important thing we can do.
Yep. And what, right there, you know, that's where it all begins, in the elementary schools, you know. And I really appreciate you coming here and presenting that, because the money can be used wisely, too, for, for what we're just, we're talking about. And, you know, it's everywhere, folks, you know, it's, it's, it's everywhere, and I think that you guys, the state, are doing a phenomenal job of trying to, to help curtail all this stuff that's going on, so thank you.
Well, it's a small part, but if we work on this together, I really do believe that we can truly make a difference, and I'm not just talking about words. We're talking about actions, too. So, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
You should have to pay for your advert.
Yeah, I liked Adam's motto two years ago, when I was attending the Drug Coalition meetings. Their logo was "Break the Stigma." That was really cool, and they're a good group. Do you think they'll do training there, Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, next, we have a recognition of appreciation of a retiree. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt a resolution of appreciation for the following employee. And our employee is Glenn Hill. Does he happen to be here tonight?
He is not. He is enjoying his retirement.
Okay. Okay, well, our resolution of appreciation, whereas Glenn Hill has rendered 20-year service to the Miami'sburg City Schools, and whereas Glenn Hill's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out his duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement, and whereas Glenn Hill has distinguished himself as a maintenance custodian, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Miami'sburg City Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for his outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. Say, I don't personally know him. Do, do you? Does anyone want to say anything? Scott?
You've worked with him.
Yeah.
Well, I can say Glenn dedicated himself to serve his students, and he was always, you know, there, you know, working with the building, you know, and having himself pride over it. So certainly he served as well. We wish him the best of retirement. Yeah, I think he moved when all the shifting of the buildings opened up. He was over at NEF for a period of time, and then had moved over to Bear when all the shifts took place. Yeah, Bauer, yeah. Yeah. But he was around the district a little bit. So, I know he's been looking forward to it, so he's been talking about it for a couple of years, and now he's going to enjoy it, but always very good with the students and the staff, so we wish him best.
That's important. Do I, anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I just move we adopt the resolution of recognition for him.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, a second by Amsler. Then roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next, we have H, our board discussion. We're going to discuss the junior state ACT test data and the spring Ohio State test data, and Mrs. Moore will lead that discussion.
I'll use my microphone this time, Dale. Katie's given you what I sent you earlier in the week electronically. I was out of sorts when I walked in the door. I already talked to you once today. I forgot I had to talk again. So our first piece is the Ohio State test data, and it's the colorful packet that Katie is giving to you. I sent this to you. We had our state results come out from spring testing of 2021. Obviously, when you look at the scores initially and by themselves, I mean, your jaw drops, and it's a little shocking. But once you take a step back and you look at the year that we had, we didn't finish 19, the 2019-2020 school year, our ups and downs of the 2020-2021 school year. Fortunately, we were in person the majority of the time. We were only remote fully for 20 days this school year. So look, taking into the consideration of everything and looking at the scores then in comparison with the state average in other districts, it makes, it brightens you up a little bit. It's not as devastating. So we, in most areas, were still above the state average in our state test scores, and there are some areas that we excelled greatly, way above the state average. If you look at our ELA II in the high school, our biology, American history, you know, they were way above the state average. Fourth grade math was way above state average. There are a couple areas that are below the state average and have been for the last few administrations, and we've been working with those departments on different standards, different skills, different resources and strategies. This, again, just to remind you, is one piece of data. This is not something that we put in, you know, it's not our sole egg in our basket. We look at multiple pieces of data, because this is one test, one day, that the kids take. You know, if the kid had a bad night, didn't get a good night's sleep, or something happened that morning, they didn't have Lucky Charms in the pantry, or didn't have breakfast that morning, you know, this is one test. So we take this into consideration with many of our diagnostics and universal screeners, with classroom performance, attendance, when we're looking at our individual students and looking at trends across the groups. So this is just one piece.
Well, you know, Sharon and I, for quite, I don't know how many years we've been following the math and stuff, and to see these math scores, it's wonderful. It puts a smile on my face, you know, because we, I remember when fifth grade math, we were on the other side of, of being at the average, and it's nice to look, be on top of it now. It's good.
And when you consider the year we had for the last 18 months, I mean, I, I don't think you can take these scores and say that they are indicative of what our students, no one can do. I just think you have... I just think you have to almost throw them out and wait for another year. That's just my opinion.
We even every year have said, you know, like I just said, it's one time, it's one moment. It's ninety minutes of a kid's life than sitting down and taking those tests. This in no way, shape, or form defines what's going on in our classrooms. And even if they were all one hundred percent, that still doesn't define what we're doing in our classrooms. We are doing some amazing things. And like Dale said, I mean, when you look at us compared to the state average and where we were, we are definitely on the other trend.
And I think I said this to all of you. My fifth grade grandson this year got his only C in math that he ever got, and it was while we were on remote. And he blamed it on math. He knew, he knew.
Our second quarter was rough on everybody.
Yeah, our kids know.
I wish I'd have had something to blame it on when I was.
The second paper is ACT data, and that is from the last four school years. And looking at the composite score, our composite score, excuse me, our composite score for this year was a twenty point zero. Last year, we were able to get the ACT in right before the shutdown, and our composite was a twenty point eight. And I consider the school year that we've had and just having a point eight difference in our ACT composite score amazing. Unbelievable. I don't have the full summary, the district profile, to give based on state averages yet, but this is just a comparison of us for the last four years.
Any other questions? So, thank you, Mrs. Moore. And yeah, tests certainly don't measure everything kids know and everything that they can do. So, yeah. Next, we'll go on to the first reading of our board policy changes. So, we just have the first reading. We go on to the consent agenda. Okay, so we, A, we have approval of out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel. And that was for Laura Blessing, her school visit to Eminence Kentucky on June twenty first, two thousand twenty-one. Do you want to talk about that at all, Dr. Blessing?
Sure. I think we had about almost, I don't know, fifteen, twenty at one point. I know Tracy and Carol attended as well. We visited a school in Kentucky that is doing some really innovative things. They helped, their superintendent helped lead us through our strategic plan. So, we all took a road trip. And school was out, but we were able to visit the facilities and talk with Dr. Barry and kind of ask how they set things up and how they utilize technology, not just as a tool, but as creators of content. So, there were several labs where students can use three D printers, just a lot of common workspaces and collaboration. So, it was just really neat to see a school that really thinks out of the box. They have a slide in their atrium, so you can slide from the second floor to the first floor. And we were told that several students use that daily as their mode of operation. Steve and I tried it out. It was very fast. And it'll, like, the gravity moves you from, like, top to bottom. They, you know, they do a lot of, they do a lot of make projects. They've got three D printers, they've got, like, banner makers, etchers. They have vending machines with books in them for the students. So, Mrs. Huber, one of our principals, is on the search for a vending machine so that students can get gold coins and get books as rewards. So, just a lot of out-of-box thinking. They have a beehive kind of in one of their, like, I don't know, courtyards. And so you can see the interworkings of a beehive. So, they do a lot of passion projects. And so throughout the school, you can see passion projects of students and staff members. So, they just really encourage creative thinking. They have exemplars for all of their students from kindergarten through grade twelve. Just a great way to think out of the box and just, their motto is, is they want kids running to school every day, not running away from school. So, really cool stuff. So, it was great to always, I always encourage educators and staff to visit other schools because it's great to borrow their ideas, so, and gather them, collectors of new ideas. So, it was great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next we go on to the approval of the resolution for in lieu of transportation contracts for non-public students two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The recommended action is that the superintendent and the director of business services recommend approval of the following resolution for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Miami'sburg City School District declares and determines that it is impractical, in parentheses, time, distance, number of pupils, expense, staffing, to provide student transportation by board-owned buses during the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year for students attending Ascension Catholic, Alexandria Montessori, Archbishop Alter, Bishop Fenwick, Carroll High School, Shamina Julian, Sendai Academy, Dayton Islamic School, Dominion Academy of Dayton, East Dayton Christian, Hillow Academy, Holy Angels School, Incarnation, Miami Valley Academy, Miami Valley School, Middletown Christian, Middletown Prep, Montessori Center of South Dayton, Montessori of Centerville, the Mount Street Academies, Spring Valley Academy, Saint Albert the Great, Saint Charles, and the Summit Academy of Middletown. Therefore, authorizes in lieu of transportation reimbursement contracts with parents of students attending and being transported to the foregoing school provided. However, such reimbursement does not exceed the state average transportation cost per student. Said costs to be determined by the State of Ohio Department of Education in spring two thousand twenty-two. Would you want to talk about that at all, Mr. Gilbert?
Oh, this is the same list as last year.
So, those parents know that.
Yes.
Do we know approximately how much this saves us?
I do not, yeah.
Right, so next one.
It's going to save a lot. It's going to save bus drivers nothing.
The shortage of drivers, it's just challenging and very difficult, you know, to get out to other areas and other schools. And we certainly want to serve our students in this district, so.
Okay, so next we move on to C, the approval of bus routes for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The recommended action is board approval for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two bus routes and bus stops established by, established by the supervisor of transportation. Resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Miami'sburg City Schools hereby approves the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two bus routes and bus stops established by the supervisor of transportation and delegates authority to the superintendent and director of business to make changes as needed during the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Do we have any changes this year? Because I know last year we did.
Every year, there's a few changes, and it can shift, you know, throughout the school year. But I think this is pretty close to the same as what you received last year.
Next, we go on to D, the approval of district participation in federal and state-funded programs. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Miami'sburg City School District authorizes district participation in the federal-funded ESER slash CARES CRF, ARP Title I, Title II-A, Title III, Title IV-A, IDEA Special Education, Early Childhood Special Education, IDEA E S C E, the McKinney Vento, School Bus Purchase Program, Psychologist Intern, and Auxiliary Programs for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and designates Amy Dobson, Steve Holman, Katie Lucas, Stacy Moore, Tina Hagman, and Dr. Laura Blessing, administrators of the programs assigned. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education encourages the participation of staff, parents, and other interested citizens in the development of these programs. Next, we go on to Consent Agenda E, Approval of Board Member Trainings. The recommended action, in accordance with the Board Policy BHBA, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following request for training as offered by the Ohio School Boards Association. October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Ohio School Board Association Southwest Region Fall Conference. And then November seventh through the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference. The total cost is one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's a flat rate for all board members and administrators.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Can we go back to D, please, for a discussion? And I'd ask, I'd like to ask Mrs. Hagman, if she would, to just give a brief what all those things might kind of be.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I completely forgot.
Just because there's people like the ESER money and that kind of stuff, that's new money. People I don't think, the public would probably be interested to know that we do have that extra money. Different money, I guess I should say. There's never extra money.
I mean, the only, the new money is the ESER money, the ARP money. We've had the CARES money and the CRF money that we're, CRF we're going to be using in fiscal year twenty-two, which is the Corona Relief Fund, Corona Relief, Coronavirus Relief Fund. And the American Rescue Plan is the eight point eight million, I think currently, that we're getting for next year that we had the plan on the website for. All the others are federal grants that we've had in the past or, and/or state grants that we've had in the past. The only difference is auxiliary programs. We may or may not be the fiscal agent this year depending upon what Bishop Lightbold and Dayton Christian decide because legislators are allowing them to opt out and become their own fiscal agent if they choose to do so. But they have until the end of July to do that, so. Does that cover it, or do you need anything else?
Yeah, I just, I just think it's important with everything that's being done differently over the last year and a half and that there is money that's there for basically a short period of time and that we're not going to be able to possibly carry on some things that are really good for our students because that money is going to go away eventually.
Yes, all the ESER money will be gone, has to be spent by September thirty, twenty twenty-four. If it isn't spent by then, it goes back and there's no carryover or anything. So, we're going to try, I'm sure your team will do their best to stretch those, you know, those funds as far as they can. And I think when the public hears eight million dollars, they just think that's a tremendous amount of money. No, our annual budget is ninety-two million. So, it really is just a drop in the bucket. But there are a lot of strings attached, as I've said before, and a lot of obstacles and hurdles we have to jump. It's a lot of work to write the plan, it's a lot of work to create the budget. But, you know, we'll do what we have to do to get those funds and create those programs, so.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hagman and Mr. Toadvine. All right, next we move on to F, the approval of superintendent's agreement for free attendance. Recommended action, it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approves LSANS for tuition-free enrollment for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year per the Ohio Revised Code thirty-three, one, three, dot, six, four, F, twelve, Superintendent Agreement for Free Attendance. Next, we move on to G, the approval and awarding of mini-grants for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Recommended action, Becky Benner, Donette Chance. Donette Chance, Elise Hafenbrack, Lee Hieronymus, Joe Izakovich, Kathy Sperry, and Stacy Moore reviewed the mini-grant proposals for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The attached list of projects is recommended for approval for joint funding with the Board of Education and the Miami'sburg Schools Education Foundation. So, do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda items A through G.
Second.
Okay, a first by Angel and a second by Toadvine.
Can we go back and talk about the mini-grants?
Yeah.
So, I sent to you, and it's attached to the board agenda. We had twenty-two applications this year for mini-grant proposals. Joe and the rest of the people that Ann mentioned, it's one of our favorite times of the year. We get together and review all the projects that have been submitted. This year, obviously, the Miami'sburg Foundation donated five thousand dollars and the board matched the five thousand dollars. From the last two fiscal years, due to COVID, some of the mini-grants that were approved for the nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one school year and the nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty school year were not able to be completed because of different restrictions. So, we did have some carryover funds. So, we were able to add those carryover funds into that ten thousand dollars this year. So, we had a little over thirteen thousand to use for this year for many grants. Those that were unable to be fulfilled in the previous years, I'm going to work with those teachers and figure out a way to, if they still want those projects to happen, like one is the Cool Critters at the preschool, figure out a way that we can still make that happen. So, we were excited we could approve a few more mini-grants. The projects that are coming in are so exciting and innovative and creative and it's going to just benefit our kids. And the two gardens that are going at the elementaries are expanding. The courtyard at the high school is going to be revamped. The preschool's doing the cap project where they collect the caps and send it in to have a park bench made. Actually, they're doing a picnic table. So, all of these projects are, we're very excited. And hopefully, at the May board meeting, they will be able to come present their mini-grants this year.
I think it's cool the way that a lot of the, once the money's used and they start a project, that just kind of blossoms. And literally, I mean that from, like, some of the gardens you're talking about and Mrs. DeMott, you know, Mark Twain with her, growing of vegetables and stuff for the kids to watch all that happen. And it's pretty neat. I think it's so very, very well-spent money.
Ten thousand dollars might not be enough in the future. Just saying.
Yeah, board members.
But seriously, it's an awesome program. Looking back over the years, there were few years where we had trouble getting people to participate and sign up. Then we went through a phase where everyone automatically put in for a thousand dollars. Now, as you go down the list, you know, these teachers are really doing their homework and coming in, you know, to the penny with requests on what they really want. And Dr. Blessing, as you were saying, you know, to get the fun aspect of it, that's really the hook that makes this important for the students. And, you know, it's a fun time and we enjoy doing it. And I think great rewards come from it. So, I appreciate the board's backing and, yeah, we'll see what we can do to kick it up.
He is on our committee count, so.
Yeah.
I thought it was pretty neat when I was reading through the different recipients that Mark Twain's Green Schoolyard has been chosen, or it has been chosen as the Green Schoolyard of the year by the Metro Parks. That was really cool. So, anything else? Roll call? Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese? Yes. Mrs. Angel? Yes. Okay, next we move to the Human Resources Agenda Items. We have the approval of personnel reports certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board. Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted Board Policies. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the Approval of Personnel Reports, Certificated and Classified.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis and a second by Amsler. Mr. Homan, did you want to speak?
Nothing out of the ordinary here. We're still getting ready for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with interviews and hiring and shifts and moves and, and all those, so. We'll get there.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to the Approval of Personnel Reports, Supplemental, Stipend, Stipend, Certificated and Classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, Supplemental Stipend, Certificated, Classified. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI Criminal Record Check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted Board Policies. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the Approval of Personnel Report, Supplemental Stipend, Certificated, Classified.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis and second by Toadvine.
Thought I said something wrong. Nobody answered.
Mr. Homan?
You're used to it, aren't you?
You have anything to say?
Yep.
Okay.
Good to go.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Upstaying.
Next, we move on to C, the Approval of Employment of Interim Treasurer. Recommended action: It is recommended by the Board of Education that Rhonda Zimmerman be hired as the Interim Treasurer for Myamisburg City Schools effective August first, two thousand twenty-one. The Board fixes her compensation subject to applicable payroll withholdings at the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour. In addition, on any day during which her presence is required in the district's office, she will receive mileage reimbursement at the IRS rate for her commute from home to the district office and her return from the district office back to home. She will also receive school employees' retirement pickup on the pickup, all employer and employee contributions paid by the Board, and the employee Medicare one point four or five percent contribution will also be paid by the Board. Do I have a motion?
I move for the Approval of Employment of Interim Treasurer.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Amsler, second by Lewis. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
So, on D, the Approval of the Resolution for Retirement Purposes. The Superintendent and Treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution.
I, I move for the Approval of the Resolution for the Retirement Purposes.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Toadvine and second by Angel. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Right, next, we move on to Five Agreements and Contracts. And A is the Approval of the Agreement with South Community, SCI, for Mental Health Services, the Satellite Court. The Superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with South Community to provide mental health services for the Myamisburg Satellite Court for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the agreement with South Community.
Second.
First by Angel, second by Toadvine. Mrs. Lucas, are you the one that would talk about this?
This is, so, you know, we're, we're members of the Satellite Court Diversion Court, and the South Community Mental Health Services are one of the options that Magistrate Linsky can use to try to help support our students that end up in the Satellite Court. So, this is a yearly agreement that we've been into ever since we've been in the Satellite Court.
Thank you.
It is paid for through a federal grant also, okay, for Title IV.
Do we know a number of people that have taken advantage of, I know we're not going to talk about individuals.
Right. To be quite honest with you, I don't think we utilize it a whole lot this year, just because of the way everything works. But we are, of, of the three school districts that feed into Satellite Court, Myamisburg does utilize it the most of, of all three districts. Kathy Gilkessen would have to give you numbers of how many kids go through that process, but it's upwards to, I'd say, a hundred kids, maybe more, through the year, through the year. And typically, it's, it's, it's part of their sanctions, so it's not really kind of a choice, it's kind of a, you need to meet with South Community for six visits, it's part of the punishment, for lack of a better term, but it's needed for.
Well, we're blessed to be able to have that kind of a service.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Next, we have B, the Approval of the Agreement with Julian and Group Incorporated. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that agreement with Julian and Group Incorporated, CPAs, be approved for services provided to the Myamisburg City School District as a Medicaid School Program Provider for the cost reports to be examined by an independent public accounting firm for the cost report periods of July first, two thousand twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the agreement with Julian and Group.
Second.
Right, the first by Angel and second by Lewis.
As you know, we participate in the Medicaid program, and as such, we have to have that program audited every year. So, Julian Group has been doing it for my, has been doing that audit for Myamisburg for the past five years. I did reach out and get several quotes, their quote for, was twenty-two hundred, and the next closest was forty-nine hundred. So, I recommend we continue using Julian and Group.
Yes.
They do make the process pretty easy, at least on my end.
Not on my end, but that's okay.
Roll call.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Sorry, I forgot the Mr., Mr. Toadvine.
I caught it.
Okay, move on to C, the Approval of Revised Agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center.
I move for the Approval of the Revised Agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center.
Oh, wait, I had, I'm sorry. I didn't read the Recommended Action, but the Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the Attached Revised Agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for services to be provided during the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And Mr. Toadvine?
Motioned and all second.
Okay, so, first by Toadvine, second by Amsler. I hadn't turned my page there. Okay.
Katie, is this for the same services we've had?
Yeah, so, there was a, right at the end, you approved the original one, but then right at the end of the school year, we had some placements that shifted around, which caused a change in the total amount of the contract, which is actually slightly lower than what the original contract was. It's just kids that haven't been told one curriculum to another curriculum, so we just need to approve that revised, revised quote going into the year.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Next, we have D, Approval of the Agreement with Saint Rita School for the Deaf. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with Saint Rita School for the Deaf. Do I have a motion?
I move for the Approval of Agreement with Saint Rita School for the Deaf.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis, second by Toadvine. Mrs. Lucas?
So, oftentimes, when we have a student in the district who is deaf, the parent may choose for them to be educated in a deaf school, rather than hearing the school, so that's the situation, so this in-person is being educated as soon as it is.
All right, roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
E, Approval of the Agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve a Remote Learning Center Agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is what Mrs. Moore was talking about earlier. Do I have a motion?
I move, go ahead.
I move, we approve the agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center for remote learning for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Toadvine. Did you want to talk anymore about that, Mrs. Moore?
No, right now, the plan is everybody's coming back.
Yeah.
In person, but because the ESC wanted to go ahead and get the contracts signed, if something would happen, if, you know, something would mandate, or even later in the school year, you know, who knows? Nobody can predict what's going to happen. If we would need this option for some students, we would have it. But right now, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
It's just a contract we're not going to use.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore, on, on that, that, the ESC, they did their own curriculum, if I remember correctly, and would probably follow more our needs anyway than last year's possibly.
Well, what has happened with the ESC is the elementary, kindergarten through fifth grade, they have their own curriculum they're doing and using their own teachers to deliver that curriculum for online. For grades six through twelve, they're going to still use the PLP platform that we used, but they will be using their teachers and adjusting it some. So, we all got a year PLP under our belt, so we know what adjustments need to be made, but instead of creating all the courses that would be needed in grades six through twelve through the ESC, they at least then had that backbone of those courses already built, and then their teachers are going to modify them.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll move on to the Financial Agenda Items. The Approval of the Certificate of Available Balances Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-two. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO approval of the following total amount from all sources available for expenditures from each fund set up in the tax budget with the balances that exist at the end of the fiscal year, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the Certificate of Availability.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel and a second by Amsler. And Mrs. Hagman?
July marks the beginning of a new fiscal year, so this is our beginning estimate of available resources and avail, and it explains exactly what we have right now, as we build on it, and what our estimate is for next year's, this upcoming year's revenue. Then, each month, you typically approve the revision, the, if there are any, on revenue. So, we just need to get this sent off to the Montgomery County Auditor, so that they, because they need it by August fourth, so I just need your approval.
All right, roll call.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Approval of the Return of Advances. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO to approve the return of advances made for the following funds. From the Psychology Intern, four-nine-nine slash nine-nine-two-one, to the General Funds, zero-zero-one, in the amount of ten dollars. The Esser CARES Fund, five-oh-seven-nine-nine-two-one, to the General Fund, zero-zero-one, two thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. The IDEA, from five-sixteen-nine-nine-two-one, to the General Fund, zero-zero-one, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Preschool Restoration, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven slash nine-oh-two-one, to the General Fund, zero-zero-one, at the amount of a hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents. The ECE Special Education, five-eight-seven slash nine-nine-two-one, to the General Fund, zero-zero-one, at the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and seven cents. And then the Tournament Account, zero-two-two, to the Athletic Account, three hundred, at five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, for a total of three thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
I move for the Approval Return of Advances.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis and a second by Toadvine.
Last month, you approved advances from the General Fund to these grant accounts so that we, because we can't end the year with a funded and negative balance. Now, I'm asking to repay the General Fund, so we're just reversing what we did in June, and this is as quickly as I can get it done, so.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. We want to see the Approval of Transfer. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfer. From EMIS Fiscal Year Twenty-One, four-three-two-nine-nine-two-one, to EMIS Fiscal Year Twenty-Two, four-three-two-nine-nine-two-two, of the amount of twenty thousand fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. The General Fund, zero-zero-one, to EMIS Fiscal Year Twenty-Two, four-three-two-nine-nine-two-two, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. The General Fund, zero-zero-one, to Termination Benefits, zero-three-five, in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. The Myamisburg Middle School Student Council, two-hundred slash nine-eight-five-three, to the Middle School Muse Machine, two-hundred-nine-eight-five-seven, one-thousand dollars, for a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the transfers.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Lewis.
Since we are beginning a new fiscal year, and we've been tracking all our EMIS costs in the four-three-two fund, we're going to take what we have left in the ninety-nine-two-one from last year, move that into this year's, and we had some additional expenses for EMIS, so we needed to transfer from the General Fund into that four-three-two. This is just a way to track those expenses. Otherwise, you'd just be paying it directly from the General Fund, so it's not really a loss of General Fund revenue. Then, on the Termination Benefits, as you know, we've offered severance packages, and we've got to make sure we have enough money in the Termination Benefit Account to cover any unexpected resignations and retirements, retirements, not resignations, and to make sure we meet the obligations of those we've already promised, some severance payments. And the last one, of course, is, Board Policy doesn't allow student accounts to transfer unless it's a class of like twenty-twenty-one, giving money to class of twenty-twenty-two, or if it is a group that has, is no longer in existence, that they're, and they have money, and they want to move it to another account for the greater good of the students. This has been a request made by Robin Blathers, if I said that correctly, I hope I did, who, the Muse Machine has no money. So, she, the Student Council agreed to donate a thousand dollars, so I need Board approval because that is contrary to what our policy has been in the past, so that's why that's on there. So, that's all of that, unless you have any additional questions. have any additional questions.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
D, Our Settlement Agreement with Two Prestige Pa, Prestige Place LLC, and the dollar amount is $20,000. The Treasurer, CFO, recommends the Board of Education approve the attached revised settlement agreement with Two Prestige Pa, Plaza LLC. Do I have a motion?
I move for the settlement agreement to, to Prestige Place LLC. Second.
Okay, first by Toadvine and a second by Lewis.
Um, I think these are my final two that I have in the pipe, um, that needed to be done for, yeah, since this is my last board meeting. So this one is, of course, a settlement agreement that their values are, um, went up, and so we're asking that they hold us harmless if they, if they keep their value, if they lower their values. So, um, it's a $20,000 direct payment to the district, so I need your approval to proceed with that.
Roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, and then next, we have E, The Settlement Agreement for TIAA FSB.
Oh, hold on here. I think it's $18,000 and some change, but I can't remember exactly. Eighteen, seven, ninety-five, eighty-four.
Okay, so that amounts eighteen thousand, seven, ninety-five, eighty-four?
Correct.
Okay. And the Treasurer, CFO, recommends the Board of Education approve the attached revised settlement agreement with TIAA FSB. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, uh, for the motion of settlement agreement, TIAA FSB.
Wait a minute. There's nothing on here.
There's nothing on there. It's just on the...
It's on the agenda in board docs. Um, this was the final one. I'm trying to get them all, and it didn't come in until four or five o'clock this evening. So I apologize for that. But it's not on the printed agenda, but it is on your board docs.
Okay, just amended it.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you open that, whoever's clicking?
It went back and forth between attorneys, and I didn't get it back until four or five o'clock this afternoon. I think it was four o'clock, but I can't recall.
Taking a while to load.
So this is a direct payment to us?
Correct.
In the settlement?
Yes.
And again, it's the tax valuation.
Right, they've asked that their values be reduced. We filed a counter complaint saying, hey, wait a minute, you know, um, and then we came to a settlement agreement where they pay us directly, so it holds the district harmless. So we don't lose any tax revenue.
So it's eighteen thousand, seven, ninety-five, eighty-four.
Correct.
Okay, we did have a first by Amsler. Do I have a second?
Yeah, you had a second by Lewis.
Oh, I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, so first by Amsler and a second by Angel. And she pretty much already explained that, so are we ready for roll call?
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
I apologize for the tardiness, Mr. Lewis. It's just, since this is my last board meeting, I wanted to get it on there.
It wasn't on here, and I didn't see it. I wasn't gonna...
Yeah, so.
All right, F, we go on to...
Hold on one second. Um, just real quick, the, the Mount Facility, uh, Business District, some of the, have we got anything settled on that, do you know?
Yeah, that was settled a while ago. The BTA dismissed the case that was brought by the gentleman, so.
Okay. I just wondered if, if there were additional...
He refiled, they redismissed.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So we'll move on to F, the Certificate of Availability for the Montgomery County ESC. The amount is forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The Treasurer, CFO, recommends the Board of Education approve the Certificate of Availability for the Montgomery County ESC in the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the Certificate of Av, Availability for Montgomery County ESC.
Second.
So first by Angel and a second by Lewis.
Do you wanna take this one, Katie?
Yeah, so, um, typically, Montgomery County services are, um, he deducts, we don't do separate POs for them, but these were additional services that he were not, um, there was a misunderstanding between us and the ESC as to whether they would be on the deduct or whether we needed a PO in place, um, and we did need a PO, so this is, Tina, explained, I think at the last meeting, Certificate of Availability is basically saying that the funds were available when the services existed, we just didn't have a PO in place.
Correct. There wasn't a PO issued beforehand, which is required by Ohio Revised Code. So we were invoiced for $47,000. My authority ends at three. Um, so this requires board approval. There were funds available, um, but someone, we just missed the PO. So just need your approval.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll go on to G, the Certificate of Availability for Chubb and Sun Incorporated. The Treasurer, CFO, recommends the Board of Education approve the Certificate of Availability for Chubb and Sun Incorporated in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Do I have a motion?
I move for the Certificate of Availability for Chubb and Suns.
Second.
Okay, first by Amsler and a second by Toadvine.
Chubb and Suns provides our cybersecurity, um, liability insurance. Um, you approved that on June 24th. Their invoice was dated June 2nd, um, for services in July 1. So in order to get it on the books, um, if for the current fiscal year, which began July 1, we had to date the PO July 1. So, um, money's available, it was available when you approved the contract in June 24th. We just wanted to get it on the books in the right fiscal year. So we just need your approval to pay because it exceeds my authority at 3,000.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next, we have, um, our next category is Acceptance of Donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's 018 account unless indicated otherwise. Nine hundred and eighty-seven, no, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven dollars from the Myhams, Myhamsburg Viking Cheers.
Hey, can you start over?
Oh, wait, it is recom, it is recommended that...
No, no, no. No, you got all that right. Let's start with the nine sixty-eight, forty-seven.
I'm having eye surgery next week, so maybe that will help.
You want me to do it?
No, I'm okay. I'm okay.
For our surgery?
Nine hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-eight, yeah, um, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents from the Myhamsburg Viking Cheer Association to the MHS Athletic Department for a Lenovo ThinkPad note, notebook. One thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars from the Viking Booster Association to the MHS Athletic Department for the purchase of jerseys and shorts for the girls' soccer team. Seven hundred and fifty-six dollars from the Viking Booster Association to the MHS Athletic Department for the purchase of two iPads for booster concessions. The following donations were made to Myhamsburg City Schools for the Campus Quest Project. $100 from Anonymous, $25 from Rick and Cheryl Stock in memory of Karen Pompous, $25 from Susan Lang in memory of Karen Pompous, $300 from the Myhamsburg High School class of 1960, and $25 from Betty Morris in memory of Karen Pompous. Do I have a motion?
I will move for the acceptance of donations.
Second. Okay, first by Amsler and second by Angel. Roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to reports, and that's the truth. I wasn't kidding. I really am. I have an eye surgery next week.
No, I didn't. You were fine. You were missing the forty-seven dollars, and I was like, well, maybe if people were listening, wouldn't...
I said forty-seven dollars, okay. But that wasn't a night mistake. That was just a bad mistake. Okay. Okay. All right, so we have our first report from the Miami Valley Career Technology Center by Joe Isakovic.
You did that well.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, oh, listen, listen. I tell you what, I'll have to practice more. Basically, uh, some good news, uh, we were, have been in the process of introducing our 2022 Student Ambassadors for the 21-22 school year. Uh, basically, we have selected forty-five senior students, and they'll serve as the Student Ambassadors for the year. And they'll learn leadership skills and public speaking to represent, uh, CTC as spokespeople for the school. It's, uh, these are really good students. It's an honor to do this. And they visit our twenty-seven, uh, partner schools in the fall to talk to the sophomores at the schools about CTC and their experiences, uh, that sort of thing. So it's, uh, it's really a big deal for these students. And basically, from Miami'sburg, we have three students that'll be representing, uh, Logan Thompson, she's in graphic commercial photography. Blake Halsel, he's in robotics and automation. And Anthony Jones, graphic commercial art. Quite an artist, uh, from what I've seen. Uh, as, uh, a point of note, um, our total headcount was fifty-five hundred and fifty-four students. That covers nineteen hundred and twenty-eight on campus and thirty-six hundred and twenty-six at our satellites. And it's interesting because if you look at, uh, back in, uh, fiscal year twelve, thirteen, uh, we were at twenty-seven, sixty-four total. In thirteen, fourteen, we were twenty-six, oh, eight. So we've, uh, come quite a way, uh, in that regard. And, and quite frankly, once the, uh, the construction's done, we'll be in a position to, uh, have maybe two hundred more students on campus versus having to turn them away. Um, you know, we have forty programs out there, and we, uh, look very closely at student counts. We have forty-six classes. Forty-six classes this year, uh, the majority of which, uh, fall in the max range, twenty-four, twenty-five students. We only have eleven purple, and the purple is considered acceptable, twelve to nineteen students. Um, and our watch program looks at anything less than twelve. And quite frankly, we haven't had anyone, uh, any of the, uh, classes on watch in a couple years. But it's interesting to look at the multiple classes. Uh, cosmetology has two full classes, criminal justice has two full classes, and, uh, let's see, graphic commercial art has two full classes, as do the health occupations classes. So, uh, we're doing quite well in that regard. Uh, also, uh, a point of note, uh, we were able to purchase some land the last two years, uh, all of it on Salem Avenue, quite competitively. And it's contiguous to, uh, our current property. So we have a, a route for further expansion later on. Some of the property, right at this time, uh, isn't, uh, really suitable for development, but we're using it for our environ, environmental sciences programs. And they're out and about on Creek and, you know, in the woods, that sort of thing. So works out well for us. Uh, construction update, uh, basically, the south wing is substantially complete. The north wing is done. Uh, August, uh, we should have the east building demolition. Uh, December of this year, we'll have our MAC, uh, portion done. That's, covers our food services, eating facilities. August of twenty-two, excuse me, the Ag Complex will be complete. December of twenty-two, the building spine, which, uh, some of you may have, may have seen, uh, in some of the publications, will be complete. And in, uh, December of twenty-three, we should have everything complete. Uh, based on that, we'll be having some events coming up. We have our fiftieth anniversary event, uh, August 10th will be our kickoff. We'll be rolling out our updated logo. Uh, we're gonna have a get-together for all of our staff, food trucks, giveaways. Uh, so that'll be on August 10th. Uh, October, uh, we will have our fiftieth year celebration for FFA, which is quite a, a milestone for our students. And then, uh, February of twenty-two, we are hoping to have a public open house where we can bring everyone in and show what we have completed up to that point, um, and, uh, kinda give everyone a taste of what's going on. So, some, uh, events coming up, I think, will be of interest. So, that's basically what I've got. Any questions?
When will you finish, complete the construction?
Uh, basically, the end of twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, we will have everything complete, all demolition done, and, uh, we'll be ready to rock and roll.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Joe. And then we move on to our legislative liaison. Sharon Angel.
Well, I've been in vacation mode, just like the legislature is. But if somebody was gonna talk today at our retreat, is there something you all wanna talk about? I know the governor's signed the budget bill. I know next year, we're going to get two hundred and, what is it, Tina? Two hundred and...
I don't know, two hundred and about forty-seven thousand. It's only about a 1.7% increase into the next biennium.
So it isn't that big of an, an increase in the following year. I think it's only like sixteen. But it is something, so. It's better than a decrease, so.
This is correct, yes.
And I do know they did, he did sign the, uh, agreement saying that juniors can opt out of the ACT if they choose to. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. Um, and then, I, you don't have anything, do you, for student achievement?
No, I do not.
Okay. And then we'll move on to Mr. Lewis for the Drug Free Coalition.
Unfortunately, the Zoom meeting took place during our retreat. So, I missed it.
Yeah. And then we don't have any district news and information. So it's time to go around the table. Start with Mr. Toadvine.
Mr. Isakovic?
Yes.
Thank you for, um, the many, many hours that you're putting in, uh, out there, making sure that, uh, things all line up. We've, we've been there before, haven't we? And we know.
Yes.
You know?
Yes, we have.
You know, yeah. Scott, Scott knows too. He was very busy through all those years. But it sounds like you guys are having a pretty exciting time out there, you know?
We, we really are. And I can't wait till we get to the, the point where all of you can come out and see what we've done. We've had a few individuals out, I think. I mentioned at the last meeting, looking at the Ag area, some of the, our diesel facility and maintenance facility where you can drive three semis in. And it's quite a facility. So, yeah, there's a lot of excitement and can't wait to show it, you know, to all of you.
Good. Also, I'd just like to congratulate Logan and Blake and Anthony also, because that's, that's an honor for them, you know, to be appointed there. And I'd like to say my granddaughter is, is going to go there this year, and she's so excited because it's something, she's going to be doing something that she loves, that, you know, obviously we don't offer in, in our school here. And so it's, it's pretty wonderful that, that that option's there for her. And I know there's, all those kids, you said five thousand, and some kids altogether are, are opting to, to do vocational things now. And that's very needed.
Do you want me to follow her around or kind of?
Yeah, actually, probably so, because she's, she'll get lost, I guarantee it.
I'll keep an eye out.
Yeah, she, she gets lost crossing the street. I'm looking ve- very forward to this year. You know, the last year and a half has been, last two years have been very, very difficult, I think, in lots of different ways. I hope with all my heart that we move into this year mask free and COVID free and, you know, to be able to move forward with norm, it's a little normalcy, I guess, normalcy. I don't know how to pronounce that word. I never could have pronounced that one right. But anyway, yeah, I'm, I personally, you know, I have eight grandchildren that's been in the district and from primary all the way up to high school. And they're excited about trying to get, you know, see their friends every day and, and do the socializing and everything that, that goes along with being in school. So it's all hope and pray that everything works out for that. I'm done.
I just wanted to start out by once again thanking Bennett's Publical and congratulating for the OSBA Business Honorable, Maury Construction, Premier Group, Viking Heating and Air, and then Miami'sburg Moose and O'Neill and Associates, and basically everybody that's donating to our schools. Also, wanted to give a big thank you to all of our custodians and maintenance staff that's out there getting everything ready for next month. It's a huge task. Thank you, Tina, for your years of service to Miami'sburg. Scott, thank you. Appreciate it. Sharon?
I will dittle that. Thank you, Scott. You've given us a lot of your lifetime. You, you went through a lot with the construction. So I thank you for our service here, your service here. And I hope you have a good time when you go home in Springbrough. And Tina, I just have to say, thank you for all you've done for the district. There were times when you struggled, we struggled with the money issues, I think, especially the TIF. You worked really, really hard to make sure that we got the money that we were due. And when you're talking millions of dollars, it's not something you can just let go. So thank you. I appreciate all the time you've given us, and good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just want to say, I think I announced in May that I was not running for the board again this year. So right now, there are three seats open. Anne and Chris are going to run again. So there is the opportu, opportunity for someone who wants to fill this seat to still file petitions. The deadline is August fourth. And if anybody needs any help, any information on how to do that, please call me. I will help them do that. That's it.
Did you hear that, Corey?
I would concur with Mr. Lewis in regards to the OSBA, OSBA awards. Also, would like to tell Mr. Hill, congratulations on his retirement. Anytime you retirement, anytime you retire on your own terms, you have succeeded in what you have currently done. So Tracy, I haven't seen you in a while. Ms. Lemmons? Welcome back. I know you are a regular here at the meetings. So thank you and welcome back. Also to Tina, thank you for your years of service here. Congratulations on your new employment. And we wish you well. I wish you well. So, and Scott, you're not getting out of here quietly either. We've talked two years that we were going to go play golf. And I know where you're going to be working down the street. I go down there on a few nights to play golf. So I will look you up and we'll hit the link. So, but congratulations to you as well. You're just changing patch colors. It's the only thing you're doing. The letters, yeah. The colors stay the same. Just the, yeah.
I think it'd be nice if you just kept wearing those down there. They throw rocks at you.
The, the last thing I'll say is, I know we had two, Christine and Megan was here tonight to discuss the mask policies. I can tell you, it's all on our minds. It's on Mr. Homan's mind, as well as Dr. Blessing's mind. It's on every school district in this surrounding area. We're not immune. So we want the best for our school district. We want the best for our community, our teachers. And we're doing everything possible to go back to normal as possible. With that being said, I know that there's going to be things that come out in the next while. Just bear with us, and we will get the information out on our website as quickly as possible, and by word of mouth as fast as possible as well. So if you hear rumors, please call one of us, ask us, call central office. Just don't assume of what you hear is true. So with that, I'll pass it along.
Yeah, that's a good point about the rumors, because there was a rumor started about Centerville that wasn't true about masks.
Yeah, and just for Dr. Blessing's benefit, Chris's phone number is six seven three four two two four.
Thank you, Mr. Todvine.
No, I just want to thank Scott for his service to Miami'sburg City Schools. I know you took great care of our facilities, and that's appreciated. And I wish you well in your new position in Springbrough. And same with Tina. I know that, you know, I wanted to thank you for your service and all of the new protocols and procedures that you put in place. And I wish you well in your new district. So that's it for me.
Well, I served the community of Miami'sburg for five and a half years. It's been a pleasure. It's, I'm happy to say that I'm leaving the district with more money than it had when I got here. And we've put in a lot of new pro, of new protocols, as Anne said. We've got, we've gotten rid of all the papers. So there's online requisitions, online receipts. There's all kinds of wonderful things happening in my department. A little sad that we didn't get to move payroll. But, you know, I just encourage everyone here to move outside your comfort zone. Sometimes you're going to be upset by what people say or do because change is hard. But I think it's important that we all move outside those zones and move forward. So I'm, I'm very excited to moving on to a smaller district and maybe, you know, on to something else. But, you know, where people are excited to do some things. So I'm sure I can do some wonderful things there as well. So I'm just glad that it's, we're in a better place than we were when I got here. Because when I walked in the door, there was a sticky note waiting for me telling me there was a ten million dollar hole in your five-year forecast. And I had to do a two-page transition plan for the new treasurer. So I'm just glad that I'm not leaving that in a, in a lap drawer for someone to find and, and scare the bajobies out of. But, so it's, we're in a good place. Everything's balanced. Everything's ready to go. The new treasurer just pretty much has to sign off on things. So I think we're, we're doing well. So thank you.
Dr. Blessing?
Sure. Well, thank you, Tina. We appreciate being left in such good hands. So we appreciate all the work you've done, and Scott as well. Well wishes to you both. We had a board retreat today, so I think it went well. I think maybe we should start planning next year's, make it an annual tradition. A lot of great topics discussed today as well. I know Stacy presented our, our test scores. And I just want all of our educators and staff to know tonight that those are, as Stacy mentioned, a one-time snapshot of, of how our students scored. And we want to commend our educators and not make them feel at all like they, they didn't bring their best to our students. And we know as we begin this year, and we can continue to provide high levels of service and look at new ways to, to push our students and ourselves to, to reach more students and, and get back there where we were pre, pre-COVID. So, and also, we do have schools starting before the next board meeting. So Tuesday, August tenth is our kickoff day. And Joe mentioned some food trucks at the MVC TC. We might have a few for staff that day as well, and a few other surprises. So we're looking forward to a few more weeks of planning and hiring, and looking forward to a, a different and fresh new year. So, thank you.
So as Dr. Blessing said, so students start back Monday, August sixteenth is the first day. Several of our offices, I think most of our elementary offices, start opening up next week. So come on in for registration. That's hard to believe, but we're getting ready for that. And also, I do want to echo again with business services, with the cleaning of the buildings and the grounds and the maintenance this summer. A lot of hard work has gone in to get those, those buildings cleaned up. So we want to thank all of our, our maintenance crew, ground crew, and custodians for that. The, the buildings look great. And then also too, just kind of echoing, like Tina said, she's brought a lot of very good processes to our district in terms of online and flows and systems. And that'll, that is, you know, taking us to the next level. That's very much appreciated. And best of luck is, is a Bethel B. We'll have to get you some B things. So, you know. And then, Scott, thank you very much, even though you're going from blue to blue. You know, we, we've worked a lot of years together, and it's been a lot of good.
I only request that during the football game, you stand in the end zone where you're neutral. So, all right?
Ms. Amsler, I think we're going to have to have a, an S and an M. It'll be right down in the center of the field.
Absolutely.
Dr. Blessing, do we want to mention kindergarten? Anything about the, with kindergarten plans yet?
In terms of all-day kindergarten?
Yeah. Just put it out there.
Sure. I mean, we, we are going to be offering all-day kindergarten this fall. So we've had several of our kindergartners already register. So if there are some families that have not registered for kindergarten, please contact our office at Memorial. Mary Ann Lawson can get you registered. And we do have spots in both full day and half day if any families have not registered yet. Definitely give us a call, and we'll, we'll get you, get your five-year-old ready to go. So.
Do I have a motion? Now, do any of you have anything to say?
I would like to say something. You know, being a coach and working with kids and people are a lot the same. And any achievement you have, you have to have people with terrific skills and that are dedicated to doing the best. And I've been very fortunate to have that. It's been terrific, great opportunity. And Sharon, thank you for your service and time. Being a board member is not easy, as everybody knows. And you've done a terrific job in serving this district. And I, it's been a pleasure. Really appreciated the opportunity. We've seen a lot of growth. We've seen a lot of change. But it's going to continue, and success will continue. And so I greatly appreciate everyone and the opportunities we've had. And, you know, it's a new venture in life. So new opportunities, new challenges. And, you know, it's kind of exciting. So thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
And you got Stacy and I in tears.
I just want to jump in quickly and thank you for all you've done. You and I worked many projects over the years when I was on the board and after. And you're the best. Thank you. Tina, best to you. You're awesome. Thanks for all you've done. Sharon?
I'm still going to be here for a few more minutes.
I, I know you are. I, I know you are, but I just, I just want to tell you, you've done a, a heck of a job. Thank you.
And now I move with adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Okay.
Tim Lewis.
Yeah, Angel and then Lewis.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Todvine?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Seven forty seven. We are out of here.